Twenty twenty four. The county committee of the whole meeting, call order, roll call.
Commissioner Capagrosa, Commissioner Livermore.
Hey.
Commissioner Middleton.
Here.
Commissioner Ondo.
Here.
Commissioner Seabird.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Free public comment, sure you have one?
I do. My name's Ray who I live in Matthias Township. And I'd like to ask this board to look into community solar. Senator Ed McBroom and a guy named Jeff Irwin are sponsoring House bill and Senate bills to allow for community solar and make it easier for communities to do. They suggest that could be on government buildings, schools, churches, et cetera. And there's places that you can get further information on that ones. Okay, another article that I looked at was something that the Wall Street Journal had in its, in its business. The wholesale price in the Netherlands has been down to zero or below for eight percent of the year. In Spain, that's happening twelve percent of the time. Most of the US states, the United States pays a fixed rate for electricity set by the power company. Much in, in Europe, people can sign up with providers, the actual people who have the solar panels and can sign up providers who charge hourly prices at the wholesale price. Some people have gotten as low a price as zero on, on their electricity over time. So some kind of, I suggested that you look at this. I got the two articles here. Then I'm over. And there yours, you keep, I'm done. Thank you.
Just respond to that, I've been looking at solar myself for the last, say, four years. They still haven't had a company come to me that's gonna save me money yet. For the cost of it compared to what I'm gonna get out of it. So as soon as I can get somebody to show me that I could even do it myself.
Maybe Ed McBroom could help.
Maybe, but what I don't want though is I think what they're looking at is using taxpayers' funding to make it cheaper for me to do it. But it still doesn't, it's still taxpayer money. So that's still not cheaper to run, it's still actually has to be cheaper to me to do it.
Yep. But then you follow up on that.
Yeah.
As you have time.
And Upco is having a thing on this, I just got an email on them, I forgot the dates. But if you're interested, anybody's interested, Upco's got it, third or fourth.
Yeah.
There's one of Hank's.
Right.
On lower generations and stuff. No, there's one here, Stephen Marquette on the twenty. I put the poster up, Paul Gallas board upstairs.
Yep. Isn't that you, P bar?
Yeah.
Thank you. Agenda, have we got anything on agenda?
Census?
Well. Yeah, that could be on my comments.
Is that this?
Oh.
Yeah.
Minutes, have we had a chance to read the minutes?
Not yet.
Just something thirty.
Yeah, we just got them, so.
Census on that?
No.
Number seven, FY twenty twenty five, hundred court funding proposal. We have. They sent us this proposal, we've been going back and forth many times on it. Anybody's got any questions on it? So far, Schoolcraft called me, said they have, or Mackinac has, they voted zone last week.
So that was the twenty percent.
Twenty, yeah, the, they were gonna, this is Mackinac thirty, Schoolcraft twenty five, Loose twenty two point five, and Elder twenty two point five. We last time we had everybody together, we had a Zoom and everybody, Mackinac, Loose, and Elder agreed on thirty thirty twenty twenty. Schoolcraft's the only one didn't like that.
No, thirty.
They're actually the highest use one, but they wanna be, they only wanna be twenty five percent. So we. And then next thing you know, we got this from judge. They decided to do this and see if it's flying. I don't like it because it looks like it's put there to make everybody, make everybody, trying to make everybody happy instead of just doing their job and making what's right.
They're trying to take that five percent and split it between the other two counties.
Right, well, actually, Schoolcraft, everything they gave us was thirty point some, thirty one or twelve Schoolcraft's percentage, where they said usage, I think it was thirty one or something, so they were actually the highest usage. Mackinac's getting up there because they've had some changeovers and they were, I think they were at the high twenties, but they said they'd do a little bit extra. And everybody's willing to do a little bit extra, but then they dropped, Schoolcraft way down because they only, so it just, they're making this decision just to try to make everybody happy, I that's what turns me off, it's like, why don't you just do what's right? And try to find, do, try to find something that's calculated so we can calculate it. If we're doing something wrong, that's making us use more. Maybe we need to change how we do friends of the court here. You know, Elder County does very well on Friends of the Court, they hold their monies down, they try to litigate stuff before it gets to pass the vote them, so. It seems like we're.
But our judge is saying his recommendation is to accept it. Is that what that is?
Our judge wrote this, he's the one that says, yeah, he thinks this, this is what he put in there, but he's doing this, just, I believe, and this is my belief.
To try to get everybody.
Try to make everybody happy, instead of just, a judge, you should be to do what's right and not just to make what sides are happy. They're hired to do the hard job and do what's right. And if it was closer, I'd, I'd be happy with it.
Is this something they do every year?
It's gonna have to be every year because this is only for one year.
So.
But it's, it's hard to judge because what Amy was saying here is different. There's different things for different, you know, you might have spent ten minutes on one, the next one you're spending ten, uh, an hour, hour and a half, and so how do you, how do we know what, how would I know this?
Well, we asked the judge here when he had that in the committee there, and he says, I asked the person, I said, in your personal thoughts, you know, who uses what? And he did say that Schoolcraft does use the higher end of, so well, why don't they pay that?
No, actually, oh, well, I thought, I mean, we didn't have a judge. The judge didn't show up.
We had, uh.
That Josh, Josh was here, but.
Yeah, he's the actual referee.
Yeah.
This is his, he's the.
Well, I thought this was the judge.
Well, this is all.
His or the judge?
They made, the judge made Josh figure this out.
Okay.
Which I don't think is right either because he's gets hired by the four counties, so he's trying to make everybody happy, so he has a job, actually. And it shouldn't be. I don't think they should have put him in that position. You know, but here we are today and, like I said, Mackinac, they voted no. It's up to us if we think this is fair.
So Mackinac is the only one that's voted so far?
No, I think Schoolcraft voted, I don't know, I haven't heard for sure if they voted or not. Yeah, well, I talked to so and so, and he didn't mention anything of it, the board chair there, Walker.
Okay.
At the school for LA Mass meeting. But I think they're waiting for everybody else, it's like, why?
If, if it went on population, Schoolcraft and Loose County are two of the lower populated counties, but it's going on something that we really have no idea.
Right. Well, it's going, it should be going on how much usage, but.
You always go by what was last year. The year before tells you, are you gonna continue at that rate, if it changes, then you change it.
And we had that.
If they are continuing in the rate that Schoolcraft each year has been more than anybody, then it should continue that direction.
Mm-hmm, and it's not. So.
I just feel uncomfortable that they just said it, we're not paying that much even though they know they are.
They're using that.
Right.
Yeah, that's.
That's.
I got no problem paying for what we're using.
Exactly.
Or even a little more, but.
Right.
Not to. Not so if somebody else can pay, another county can pay way less than they are, and I find I'm voting this meeting, this is.
They cancel it.
Right, cancel it. But if, if we vote no, they're gonna.
They're gonna have to do something.
They're gonna have to the meeting again. They have to figure something out.
So this stands right now, Schoolcraft voted no, and.
Oh, you don't know.
We don't know that for sure.
So we're the first one up.
Mackinac.
We're the next one, Mackinac voted no. The last Zoom meeting we had with all four of us on there, Mackinac, Loose, and Elder, we were all okay with thirty thirty twenty twenty. Schoolcraft said, we don't wanna pay that much. But they're using that much. But they only wanna pay twenty five percent or less. So this was.
When we say, um, sorry, you only paid for twenty five percent, we can't be available for you.
Well, we asked the judge.
Hours in a month.
What happens if the three of us vote, uh, Mackinac County, because you know, too, they're, they wanna write a resolution and make their own one and send it to us, that is thirty thirty twenty twenty. But they, and they wanna know from the judge, they asked and haven't got an answer yet, I'm sorry.
Screenshots.
Dark pictures there.
Screenshots of his calling.
Um, and then our question was, is if Mackinac, Loose, and Elder all vote yes on thirty thirty twenty twenty, what happens? Is the judge gonna say, okay, two out, three out of four?
Approved.
Approved is good, what, and that's what I was hoping for this meeting, so we could block them down and say, where do we sit on this? Do we have to have a yes, a hundred percent of?
But they're asking the two lowest.
Right.
To take on more.
My guess is they have to have all four say yes.
Right, and they already have Mackinac.
Budget.
Said no, so.
Down to you.
And they didn't answer when we asked them, should we keep going, they said yes. So what is it?
I don't know, is this the attempt of the negotiation to get?
I wish they would, was stuck with the meeting so we all could sit down and just figure it out.
Zooming, have all four counties.
Right, all gonna go right down there.
Well, they don't like, oh, take over to Mack, I don't care.
So.
Is this crucial, is should this?
We should make, and that's another thing we should. I recommend we make a vote on it today. So they can get something, whichever way it goes.
Right.
Just so, and I'd like to vote so we can push it to actually have that meeting, I thought that meeting was set in stone and we're going. Um, but. Apparently, my emails got locked up since the eight, so I haven't got any emails.
I'll make a recommend, recommendation, we go to twenty two point five percent. I mean, sooner or later, we're gonna be the one that's gonna, because we're gonna be retraining somebody and then we're gonna be here.
No, we're gonna.
So, you know what I mean? I mean, we're talking to a lady at twenty seven years in here doing the job, she, you know, it's a lot different than somebody's got a year and a half. I, I recommend we, uh, we do twenty two point five, get it started.
Way to show that, look, we use twenty two point five and you still use more than any of us, now you need to do what's right.
That's what we've been trying to tell them, but they won't.
Because this has to be reviewed again in a year.
And that's, I still don't, but I don't know what, no Mackinac.
Because they're not gonna like the fact that it's not fair that Schoolcraft's using the same amount of them, sometimes more, and they're having to pay on the higher end.
See, the thing is, it's.
That's not right. It isn't even just about us and the fact that we're all for sharing, and I'm thinking Mackinac, that's not fair for Mackinac, they're taking the responsibility, they know how much, and they're saying, yes, we'll take the thirty percent. And Schoolcraft knows that they're using that same amount and they're saying no, and more.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, yeah, it's not right when you say it's not, it's not about making everybody happy, it's about what's right and wrong, your county uses this much.
We pay.
You shouldn't be paying for this.
And I think we should hold them to a meeting and let's figure it out instead of just going out there, because we're gonna be in the same spot again next year.
Mackinac could throw a fit too, and be like, well, if they go down, we're not gonna pay that much, so now we want everybody to pay twenty five across the board.
But right now, the motion is to approve our percentage, it's like two thousand.
We have a motion, yeah.
We don't have a second, so that drops. Do we have any other motions? I said this, Jack.
He's not, he's not saying.
Oh, I thought you said.
He said he was recommending.
I was like, wait, am I ready to get the motion from all?
I'm sorry, Nick.
We have to make.
Somebody's gotta break the ice here.
Who is I know about?
Mackinac did, they voted down, yeah.
They voted down, well. We need the service.
Yeah.
I know we need the service.
Yeah, the guy leaves.
But it needs to be fair though.
Right.
You know, and that's.
I think.
At least it's a little closer affair than.
We need to push them so we can sit down and have this meeting and find out, and not a fix for just this year, a fix for the future, so we're not in this.
Oh, yeah, it should be done for five years or something like that.
Well, and.
Well, then that's just everybody pays twenty five percent, because they're not gonna have anybody agree on a five-year plan.
We made a suggestion because they had.
I had suggested that earlier.
They had a calculation there of time that with so causes and all the causes and kind of like what takes time to do, and to do like a three-year rolling average. So at the end of this year, whatever that percentage was, that's what you pay next year. So it eventually keeps up with the whole system.
The one, one problem I do have with this is why don't we have last year's or last three years?
Because Schoolcraft was even lower yet. And Mackinac's like.
Higher yet, Schoolcraft?
No, they were paying even less.
Oh.
They were even paying less, and Mackinac is the one actually caught us saying, hey, you guys use more than anybody and you're paying way less, we need to renegotiate this, this isn't, we're not getting the service that we think we're paying for.
It's, it's the, the judge on the other end of this. And Mackinac, is he from Mackinac, like ours is from here?
The referee here?
Oh, no, I found out the judge.
Yes, it's Judge Rahali Gibson, why is it got a Luma? He's using old stationery?
Raleigh Gibson Graham and Nebo.
I guess there's old stationery saved on the computer or.
No, I.
Because it had.
Yeah, Ra, Raleigh Gibson.
Graham.
Gibson Graham and Freed.
Freed, yes.
Josh Freed.
So they're all our eleventh court circuit judges. Or district. Right, but still following the eleventh.
Circuit.
Right. Yeah, much I learned a lot.
Is there two district judges there, just curious?
Uh, yes.
District, I mean, like.
Nebo and Schoolcraft Nebo is.
Gibson.
Gibson.
No, Gibson's a.
Circuit.
She's, she's the top dog.
Yeah, so she's, she's about her list is ninety second district court.
Well, maybe she was and now she is more, since the old stationary, she's upped her game.
Well, there's, because there's two districts, there's the ninety second and the ninety third.
Right.
Under the eleventh circuit.
She's the chief judge of the circuit, but she's in the ninety second.
Right, she has been filling, she has been, my understanding, because at one point, I don't think Newberry was real happy about that, that she basically, she was a, she's the chief judge, and she decided, I'm gonna take these instead of.
Right.
And there was some squawk about that, whatever that's her, but.
So.
Yeah, so there's two, there's a one circuit, two districts.
You recommend that we go with what our judge says, Nick.
That's what I recommend.
I recommend we go with the other three, the three counties that were all in agreement through the last meeting we had. And push us to where it's, gets done and gets done right and fair and not for just one year. I mean, for our budgeting, we can budget, say thirty thousand, and if it comes in a little higher, a little lower, we can find two, three thousand, it's not gonna kill us, two, three thousand, our budgeting.
Well, that's, they're saying the budget then would be just that. You'd come in around twenty nine thousand at twenty two point five percent.
Yeah, twenty nine.
Twenty nine, yeah.
Seventy five.
Three, yeah. You know, if we finally just come to an agreement that we're all doing twenty five, we're gonna pay thirty two seven, which is gonna be another.
Right.
You know, thirty.
Three, four hundred.
Yeah, thirty three hundred dollars, yeah.
Just comes down to the same thing, we're willing to give and take on more costs, even though we're not using it, Mackinac's willing, they're all in, in, Schoolcraft's not, so.
No.
It's just gonna be some amenosity when a year comes from now and they all say, and you proved us all right, and now it's time, you take your full on, and that's gonna be a hard budget for them to adjust when there's five to seven percent more they're using than what they budgeted for. So this isn't gonna hurt us, it's gonna hurt their county when it comes to their budget, when they're budgeting way less than what they're using next year, when we all say that's enough.
Well, that's why we're doing it this year, because we've said that's.
Trying to say that's not this year.
This year, we said.
Okay.
That's.
Well, then I would go with that recommendation then, if this is ongoing.
It's been.
They keep fighting not paying their amount, then we stick with the thirty thirty.
That's my rec.
I wouldn't give them another year then. If this has been a fight.
Yeah. When all summer seemed like.
But. No, I was saying, when was the last time this was done? A year ago again, or has it been years?
Years.
This, this.
Okay, so this would be the year to go, okay, nobody's ever adjusted anything before. This is the first time it's being adjusted in how many years?
This just came to September fifth, so.
Yeah.
I've had meetings.
Yeah, this has been before.
ongoing.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, but say a year ago, two years ago, the rates have been the same.
Right.
This is the first year that it's coming up saying, A, the rates are wrong. So what I'm saying is, is this, the, okay, the rates have been wrong and you're fighting us on officially changing them, we're gonna change them and next year when this comes back around, you're gonna have to, you're gonna take all of it, that's what's gonna happen, but.
Yeah, whether they come up with a.
How long in the things.
And they take, you know, that we go to, you know, and they need to figure that out, to let Schoolcraft go to twenty seven percent this year and then to thirty, Nick, you know, to slowly bring it up, you know, but yeah, it's not fair for everybody, it's not fair to our people to pay for somebody else's services.
And that's what it is, it's, they're taking a little bit out of each one of us to, so they can.
Right.
Not pay the full.
Yeah.
Yeah, gonna pay your bills.
We have good people, it's like we can pay, we have to pay our bills. And hope that you know.
This guy we just hired, this Josh we just hired, yeah, do we want him leaving because nobody can get along?
You won't.
So we gotta start somewhere.
Yeah.
If you wanna say twenty percent, say twenty percent, but you're only two point five percent more. And then next year you say, whoa, this is what was said was true, now we're going to, I think, my opinion, it shouldn't be twenty two point five for us, it's two point five percent more than we thought. But it was twenty five percent, which is two point five percent lower.
No, we weren't at number four percent.
I thought that's what we were paying, it's all the same, weren't they?
What were, no, what were we paying before?
I don't know what crime's breakdown was.
Yeah, it was, uh.
We were only paying sixteen or eighteen dollars per year.
Oh, yeah, this is a big jump for us. Well, and, and his benefits, his pay package was a whole different.
Oh, yeah, the number guy, yeah.
But no. It basically worked because he wanted to. We were way lower than this before, this percentage.
I, I've never seen what we were before.
Because he wasn't drawing benefit, was he? He was just drawing a straight salary, the guy previously, it was, didn't have any benefits, all he was drawing was a straight salary.
Contracted employees, we paid them.
Oh, this guy, and now we're paying benefit and, you know, so it's.
But we weren't paying that much incentive before either.
But we do have to start somewhere and.
We do have to start.
I, we've, we've hammered this enough.
If we were gonna do twenty percent, two point five, and in the year this has to be readjusted, we have real numbers to show, and we show that we all took on ours and we took on more than we spent, now here it is. We have to get us along.
I just don't wanna kick it down the road farther and farther, because all this, that we're up to so far.
Well, we're all here a year from now.
I know, but we have to deal with it a year from now again.
And we're ready.
And we have nothing, I'm on that, on that one here, we have nothing to base it on.
I, I see us in a year, still have, we're not gonna get an agreement a multi-year this year.
Nope, no, no.
Not a snowball's chance.
But then anybody's.
Next year, we'll have some figures.
Biggest that we had, I think.
Because we've been paying differently, everything's different.
Three meetings so far, that all three of us counties besides Mackinac or Schoolcraft has agreed on some, and Mackinac won't agree on.
Or Schoolcraft.
Or Schoolcraft will not agree on. So we've been holding our guns this whole time, trying to make it fair. And that's fine, if the rest of the board wants to say, okay, we're just gonna pay, that's fine.
Oh, gotta say it like that.
No, I don't consider it, not even it is, it is, because we've been holding our guns and sticking together on this.
We've been holding our guns on a lot of things.
I know, but to make it fair and be done with it, and now and Mackinac's held up their end, with, they voted it down.
When do they have to come up with numbers, when does this have, when does this have, is it's gonna come back to us in another month?
Come back.
And say, do you like this, and then in another month if we don't agree.
And that was it, we had a meeting scheduled for. Wednesday was the meeting, or tomorrow, that I was supposed to be in Mackinac, all the counties were gonna be there, and now they went and canceled it before our vote. It's like.
Schoolcraft or Mackinac did?
The judge did.
Oh.
And then she didn't show up, uh, the meeting.
No, and that's, we bring him, we asked her to be here, her, to be here to explain to us, and they don't wanna do nothing, it's like, but they just want us to just agree on stuff like.
Like it's their budget, right?
No, it's that's.
That's paying it.
Yeah.
Is it court budget?
It's, no, it's actually Friends of the Court budget.
Yeah. And like he said, the other guy was, um, was a contractor, right?
Right, pre-penning is no.
Well, I'd like to see it done, let them move on.
There's that small caveat too, that the more you pay, the more you get reimbursed, because it is a cooperative reimbursement.
It is, but it's still.
If you use the time.
Well, that's making more use, their other option was too, is, uh, Mackinac, Loose, and Elder all had an idea of just saying, well, heck with it, if they don't wanna agree with ours.
You use.
We go just the three of us and they can find their own, and we'll have more support. It's gonna cost a little bit more, but it, it gets reimbursed sixty pers.
Six to six.
Fifty six percent, so we might be paying another, say, six thousand dollars, but we'll have somebody here more time for Friends of the Court, that's more time for our people.
Have they heard about this?
Well.
You would think if they had heard about losing their.
Well, that's the thing is, that, and that's what we wanted the judge to be here at a meeting so we can ask her this kind of stuff, but they won't show up.
If you're in the eleventh circuit, the only way you get out of that eleventh circuit is by, uh, uh, mandate from the state, no, you just can't get out of it.
I don't know how, I don't know how this referee position.
Up to the state, we're.
Would you have to have a ref, referee?
Yeah. And they'd have to hire their own referee.
Schoolcraft, but they can't get out of that circuit, that's what I.
No, but they still can have a separate, we can have our own record and be ourselves.
That would make you the referee.
I don't know.
You didn't play football?
I did, one year. I decided I liked money more than sport.
There you go.
Okay, so do we need to make a decision on this?
Yeah, we, I would like to get a motion on it. I.
I'd say stick to our guns. If that is what the three other counties have talked about and they have said that they want this, then I would do what the county say.
So you're talking the twenty two point five?
Nope, twenty percent.
Twenty.
Schoolcraft needs to pay thirty if they are using the most.
Go back to the.
That's what Mackinac, Loose, and Elder have agreed upon right at the beginning, was twenty twenty thirty thirty.
Three out of four all agree that is fair, I would say stick to your guns if you guys are sticking to your guns.
That's what, that's what I said that my recommendation to our board's gonna be. I said.
Coming to motions that we do not accept. That we do not accept the friend, your referee position as presented.
I'll second that.
Roll call. Any more discussion first? So you're gonna vote?
We're going to not accept this proposal.
First and maybe your, you know, plans to offer or something else, or we're just rejecting just. I'd like to have that meeting, so we can actually figure it out and be done with this. So we're just voting just to not approve.
Right, he's just not gonna approve it.
Right, if they come back with something, we said that next week. That we could.
Motion was to reject their.
Right. Roll call. Commissioner Livermore?
Yeah.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Okay, Motorola service agreement, fifty thousand dollars. Any way we can save anything on that? I didn't see anything in there that. And this is just.
It's very complicated, very technical.
Oh, thank you so much.
And many, 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 baby, you read the letters, the fine prints got fine print.
I know, and I wish we had somebody here.
I mean, this keeps everything alive.
Now, I just wanna. So Motorola is what all got switched with everything last two years ago, right?
This is more to do with jail, I believe, right? I wish we had somebody here from that past question, but that, this is consent anyway.
Yeah.
So we can.
Well, I'm still, I mean.
But does this come on the sheriff's department?
This is come out of the nine one one.
Nine one one.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's who we paid to set up the system, that's who we're paying to maintain the system, and that's just this.
I was just trying to.
Painful continuation of.
I didn't know if this was like the new one, it's like every two years, or I don't know any of them, like, is this? Cause I remember we had, we had just done one for.
Scroll back to the top here.
We did something, we did did a big.
One year.
Seventeen point seven, it says, agreeing with renewed that for additional one year turn on every anniversary.
Start date eleven September twenty four, end date thirty one August twenty seven, so. It might be per, that might be the price per year, but this is a three year.
Contract.
Contract.
It's got, yeah.
On page five, no, six, excuse me, my apologies.
That was for their vehicles, I think.
Yeah.
Police vehicles, all those scanners and everything got switched over to Motorola from that other one. So it was all the same as the. Alright. Can't really ask too many questions.
Alright, uh, Hal, and I said I'd like to see our representative from the sheriff's department here bench time, definitely. I was told before that they would have a representative here at every meeting anyway.
Well, I mean, if it's coming out of that fund, and it is nine one one, I mean, I'm not gonna say no to making sure that we have this.
No, we have to have it, yeah, right. To to keep our system going.
Yeah.
Consensus?
Consensus.
Yes.
Or do you wanna put it on to ask questions on a line item actually, I want, right, consensus, yeah. Number nine, somebody pops up, we can always ask. Okay, three year our GIS subscription. Honestly, personally, I use this.
I do too, and well, and nine one one uses it though too.
Yeah.
That's the other, that's the big half of that. It's it's nice having it on the website, and I wanna look stuff up, but that's the big. You know, getting the ambulances, the fire trucks to where they need to go. Yeah, see, I think it's a great bonus for us to have access as citizens to look on the county's website. Pull that information up.
Eighty three hundred dollars a year. Consensus?
Yes.
Does some of that come out of nine one one, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Or it all comes out? The subscription will be split, and the nine one one portion for twenty six, twenty five will come out of that one. Description and maintenance split, and then, uh, or no, they have their own maintenance, so forty five hundred will come out of general for. Equalization.
Ethan had a subscription.
How much more percentage that up from last year would be, you know, it was a big jump with a.
Does does billing inspector you said? Does some of that come out of his fund?
If you use it, you probably use it right on our site website. It was an increase of about six hundred, I wanna say, but we lock in for three years. But no increase. I like the idea of doing some blocking in.
Right, so I keep coming back to doing them.
Yeah, yeah, I don't. I could, I have to look up the. I can do that if you wanna leave. I'm fine with it. Any other questions with the?
No, I don't.
Consensus?
Consent.
Consensus.
Okay, deploy service three year contract renewal, seventy two thousand, five percent annual increase in ten percent. Paid in full discount. Because we have the money in our account to pay, and so this drops down seventy two hundred bucks, right?
And they are giving us a little bit more service now too with this, Joe?
Yeah, so they're coming on sites. At least once, at least once, sometimes twice. And then they did pick up a lot of the. Services that couldn't be canceled. They're gonna eat, they ate a lot.
They ate a lot, the transfers, subscriptions that.
There we go. Yeah.
They were spread out and not easily terminated.
Any other questions on them, deploy?
No.
So you know, that is a big savings from what we previous were paying years ago.
Yeah, even, and that's when they were, and they were here, they had three of them here, you know. In three years, we'll still be paying less than we would have been paying this year on the old system.
It was like a hundred and ten thousand a year.
And then steadily.
And growing.
Improving. Well, our infrastructure and building to resolve.
Consensus?
Yeah.
Good consensus to the pain full. I would know.
Yes.
Yes, I I would like to have that, yes, consent to pay in full to get the ten percent discount.
Yeah.
If we have it in our budget to be able to do it, I believe we do. Yeah, we do. Consensus on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Um.
Always painful.
Three year. Joe been getting, trying to get. Three year, or you know. And we actually get some little bit of discount for it. Like so, fire protection, three year renewal, rate lock, jail three fifty one annually, and courthouse four fifty one annually. Questions?
Nope, gotta maintain the fire suppression system.
Consensus?
Yes.
Yep, with well. For the record, three year renewal. Four thousand fifty due first year, no payments due till year second, third.
Do years of your second and third. So you're paying in full?
Yeah, this one would be a painful first year with no payment for two years. So just a upfront, pretty much a pay everything upfront, you get it, that's the discount, and that's the.
That's the discount.
Hey, I have a lot to bill on the agenda.
Questions? Consensus? Thirteen, GFL recycling, one year renewal, one pickup, this ninety three a month or biweekly. Is two or one oh four a month, so. That recycle bin fills up pretty quick, so I thought this for.
Actually, it's not too.
So it is getting used to recycle.
Yeah.
But that's good, so for an extra.
What, eleven dollars?
Oh, it's a can twice as often.
I don't think that's a bad thing. I I've come to bring stuff from the airport, and then with their popping up.
Consensus to do biweekly pickup for one oh four a month?
Yes.
Agreed. Consensus, fourteen, aximus. Thousand, the twenty three cost allocation plan. We got that done. Did anybody look at that? I mean, actually, we had some people that were actually happy with that. Who wasn't? I just heard you go and hear from them.
Yeah, so everybody I learned from was happy because theirs went down, but I know somebody had to go off. So we haven't heard yet.
It did, that's what, you know, that is what it is.
Ambulance and nine one one went down.
Alright.
Right, uh, but I didn't look at all the little. We want to compare to.
It is, it's pretty much what, it is what it is. Right, you go by.
There were a lot that were maybe fourteen hundred, that are now twenty five hundred, so you know.
Figure out, yeah. How many stamps per person, how many, how many hours share you had to put in figuring out payroll and.
It's, yeah, based on time sheets, yeah, um. Every consensus to.
Consensus to approve?
Yes.
So next one, jail door last. Friday, was it, I believe, late Friday? The injuries, and how old is that door? Sixty? Finally. Trying to give up the gold for this last. So they got a, they got a toll hanging over right now. We do need it, it is to replace though, it was an old door, now we replaced it by a log, we have to put a fire door. We called Norm, this was the only one that would had time for us on these last doors that we called for the veterans. So, and that was just last week, or a couple weeks ago, so we just called him, and he said he could get at it, when do you say? Did Norm say when he could do this by? He just had to bid today. And they were, I should always, they were here to say that, cause that's the one thing I asked, cause.
This is a priority of.
If it wasn't gonna be right away, I would go there and. Temporary. Myself, just to get it by, but. And if it's gonna be, you know, they can use it for a couple months, I'd say, well, try it.
I know we're talking February for the stuff upstairs.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't want them to wait to do this stuff before they do, you know.
No, that's needs to get.
That needs to be a priority.
Probably depending on how long it takes to get the door.
Well, it's a actual common fire door, common size. They should be able to get that. They should have that in stock.
Readily available.
Does this, does this weld in then? Is that? No, this is gonna be, they'll cut the old one out and they'll cement it in. Okay, it's in block on each side, so they'll put it there, and the enforcement in the cavities, they'll lock it in.
Don't like, oh, is it?
I would weld the old one. The frame on the old one has been welded so many times. And things welded to it, been ground off it, welded to it, they don't know what the hinges are. He went to try to grind into it, and there's weld, JV weld, putty, and screws. In it, so it's.
Thing.
Turn patch and problems.
I said that thing is older than I am.
That's a jail.
Yeah.
So. Yes.
Yeah, original door.
I like to see a consent on it, and then, uh, find out what's.
Update us on the date you can.
Right, to get it in. This is under five thousand dollars, so in an emergency, if it does come through. If he says he can get it right away, start next, next week, I could sign off on that.
You gotta put a, well, a motion instead of a consensus?
Well, if if we approve it, and he comes up back and says, yeah, I can't get at it till February, then where do we sit? That changed my.
You already approved it.
That's what I said.
But if it came on, come in tomorrow, and you can put it in, it's on consensus.
Well, but it's under five thousand dollars, in an emergency, can the board chair?
I mean, we're gonna have him replace this door no matter what.
Yeah.
I kinda agree with Nick.
And do it. I'll make the motions. Up to five thousand? It's twelve to forty five hundred bidders.
That was five dollars, you never know if we need something else.
Yeah, we may need a new lock system on top, if that one doesn't work through it. We'll dial it by that. Need a second?
Let's let Joe get it written down first.
Well, Brian said. He'd wait and see if he gets the job ordered. How far out isn't toward or not, eh? Quick, I would think on that. It's the same fire doors was going in the. So the five thousand out of Capitol Bridge? That's where it's gonna have to come out, yeah. Same firewall. Commissioner Livermore?
Yeah.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Uh, number sixteen, norm construction proposal for veteran service office renovations of twenty two thousand six hundred. Out of that.
Sixteen, seventeen, that can go together, don't they?
Yeah, what's the difference here, Joe? Why do we have sixteen and seventeen?
Um, because.
One's a request for us to pay it. Okay, I see, the whole amount is twenty two thousand, the vet, Vietnam vet, not the Vietnam vets, but the.
The committee, committee voted, they're thinking seventeen and change.
Yeah, county veterans. Yep, we'll pay all, but if Elder County can pay fifty five hundred, they'll pick up the rest. Yeah, I debated what order, but then it's kinda like chicken. Alright, so sixteen, we have consensus.
Consensus.
Yes.
Yes.
Seventeen consensus. Okay, um, eighteen, letter to Michigan State, please notify the GSO office, we move to the current occupied rooms.
You've had the conversation, this isn't just a.
No, they've already known and they.
Right, this is just the formality of saying, hey, we are taking.
I think we've told them they can move it into that anytime too, did we? This letter went to Matt, reported to Lieutenant Nolan, didn't hear back, so. Sure, and I talked to Nolan and so did.
And that's, I'm pretty sure you have.
And then Brian talked to Nolan. So the.
Big move your coach into the mailroom.
They're, they're just happy to be somewhere, not prison. I like consensus.
Yeah.
Yes.
Nineteen, Elder County Veteran Service Program Village, point one zero. The veterans, that was approved in the election, wasn't it? Well, now we have to prove that we.
You can actually levy it.
Your board. Yeah.
The veterans part did.
They can levy up to that. And they're asking for the full amount this year because of the remodel.
Okay.
So I get, yeah, this is I was saying, you have to allow you to. Another chicken egg.
Yep, yep, yep.
Yes. Consensus?
Yes.
We're twenty, personal policy, updates, meals, return, return to work, testament. Of current need for salary employees.
That's for, um. Yeah, I'm like, yeah, we went through all that. Scott and.
Yeah, so the travel policy is that website where you can, we have said code to calculate. The return to work is the, uh, after no symptoms or fever, inter转forers there. And then the salary, yeah, it goes hand in hand with the magistrate and the public defender, it could apply to any. Salaryed employees. But F M L A unpaid medical and military, or you can't. You can't bring it up, it's only included. But I was going to, so this would be to approve. These changes.
Those changes, you do the personnel policy.
But not. There's some more tweaks in the, uh, personnel policy, I want to clean up that first part, make all the policies just section one, so if we can. If, if we do approve this, I'll bring the policy back in December and make everything effective one one. Yeah, just over there. Thank you for doing that. Any other questions?
No.
Consensus?
Consent, yes.
Number twenty one, animal shelter authority of the board. To choose somebody to set, accept. To choose somebody to set, accept, move out of date, move out of.
I, I'm not good hiding my emotions.
I had to make the motion that we elect.
Because Kelly and I are on the committee, this one.
Yes. Yeah, what's going on here? Um, what we're trying to do is speed up the process of, if they have questions. It's gotta come back all the way to the board of an agreed date to move out. So it can go back and forth, cause we have to, if they ask questions, gotta come to our boards for a hundred percent approval. If we elect somebody to have the authority to make that decision on just that move out date. They don't have, we don't have to come to the board every time to make such a meeting.
Do they have a?
Cause we'll agree upon.
No, they don't. But we're saying, we know we're all five of us are on the same age, let's just let Mike be the one that can say.
I was just wondering if you had some kind of a date in mind or?
Well, we just had.
We just had a hearing on last Wednesday. And they've got, the judge scheduled another hearing for a week from Wednesday. Twenty-third. So on the twenty-third, and I don't expect, we may hear back for them, but I wouldn't. I wouldn't bet money on it. Come the twenty-third, we want a thirty day move out from that date. This won't work.
Okay.
And if they haven't agreed to it, and before then, that's what we're gonna ask the judge for on that day, it's a thirty day. So if there, so anything that doesn't fit in that, I would say no to automatically, cause that's not what we want. You know, if they come back on Friday and say, okay, we can be out in five weeks.
So I would, I would, what I'm asking is, is there uh. An end to this rainbow that's going on here?
That's the end.
What we're trying to get.
The judge gave us till the twenty-third. For the two parties to make an agreement on an out date. If we can't come to an agreement by the twenty-third for an out date, the judge is going to give a out date. On the twenty-third. So, but we're, we're proposing to give Mike the okay, so if they come before the twenty-third.
I, I get you there, I was just wondering. There was a little light here.
There is a little.
Little, so basically, if they, if they're out by December first, I would say. Yes, we agree, if they're not gonna be out by December first, no, we don't agree, we'll go in front of the judge.
So if they're, they're going to be the animal shelter, what do we do with that one?
We gotta have animal control. By law, we have to have animal control. So with that, we'll have two of them in this county?
That may end up being what happens, John, I say won't. We'll have to hold animals for sentimental. You have to hold them, and don't quote me, cause I didn't look.
Yeah.
But I believe if they have no identification, if the animal comes in with no, no microchip, no collar, no nothing, I believe it's four days. I believe it's a week if they do have some kind of identification, that you're supposed to try and find the owner and whatnot. You know. We're not looking to put down every animal that comes in.
No, we.
I don't know if after those four or seven days. I doubt that they're gonna agree to take the animals from us to try and find a new homeless, because of everything that's gone on in the past. So then, you know, we're in that same, that's one of the things that we have to figure out and why we want our building back, so we can start figuring out. We were just, what are we gonna do?
We were called last Friday by individual in town that's owned a cat. That they called the animal shelter and they said they're at capacity, call the stair department, so we hadn't taken a cat. Cause we have to, but we do not have a facility.
And we have to have a facility.
Take him up to the judge?
Though I wish they.
Alright, no, I was just wondering if, if once we get that thing back, if it just stays open, or I mean, closed.
No.
No, lower.
We will, we will be running.
And it won't be Eldred County Animal Shelter, it will be.
Whatever.
Whatever we decide to name it at that point.
It won't be just animal control though.
No, we're not looking to do that kind of, cause then we have to license the building.
We have many, right, as far as we have to.
Yeah, we do.
Ensure it.
Very, they were very close.
Alright.
Yeah, so this is strictly.
Did that answer your question?
I can charge you them.
Hey, that's not funny, I had to do that in AR, man, I went to school for a whole week.
That's expired.
Alright, yeah, consensus.
I make a motion.
We gotta.
I'll second you.
Second, roll call. Fisher Livermore?
Yeah.
Fisher Nelson? Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver.
Yes, and that is to make Mike not for chair.
It's alright.
What are you gonna do if they call up, wanna get a horse? I didn't probably call my horse, cause I got stalls.
Call, call people with horses.
Yeah.
Number twenty-two. The L forty twenty-nine.
For the last.
Final answer?
They were tentative before, not good.
Consensus?
Yes.
Yes. Can we sign it and get it done? Do we, is there a deadline on that?
I think she wants to get going.
Okay, um, will you get a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call. Fisher Livermore?
Yes.
Fisher Nelson?
Yes.
Fisher Otto?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes. Number twenty-three. Arbitration for.
That's some tires.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
It's a little bigger on my screen, so I guess.
Any questions on that? Pam, anything on that?
That's your realm.
It's equalization, but. I've seen it.
Do you, uh, do they ever, uh, enlist the values of townships? They ever enlist the value of the state or federal property and the state properties? You know what I mean?
No, cause they're all tactics, no.
I know, but it would be nice.
No, but she says she has to, uh.
Oh, I don't want.
Rule anyway, right?
She says that, huh?
So we should ask for those, cause we had this dope and big thing, is she had to do those because. And we had to pay extra for them, right?
They're still persons.
Right, so she had to do those extra parcels, so maybe we should ask for that, what they was.
It'd be nice to know. You know what I mean? Down the county I come from, this game you're all privately owned.
I only tried to hunt.
That's some of the illegal taxes.
Sneak, yeah, they don't pay us, because they don't pay property taxes.
That would be on the. Central force.
I'm still wrapping my head around it.
You wanna two, you can, but only every ten years, you can, you gotta choose which really you wanna get that money.
Oh, yeah, just did that last year.
Yeah, I would, I think we should do that differently.
I would do whatever was to get the most money for the schools.
Yeah.
They make it, we're gonna be a lawyer to read it and understand it, we just take the recommendation of her.
The people that we're.
So it'd be nice to know.
It would be, I think we should ask. Well, because we are, we had to pay her more because she said she missed that, and she has to do the parcel. We have to do it, maybe we should get.
Yeah, it's a for paying for.
Right?
Right, yeah, but I got no problem with. This is, this is the must to report.
Make most, or no, this is a consent? We sent on that?
Yeah.
Number twenty-four, magistrate salary. Bringing him back up to where he should have been, start with.
Um, with, on top of that, though.
With a four and twenty-four. Right. Four, four twenty-five, yes. He's definitely doing an awesome job and very organized.
It seems to be like it, well, I've talked to him.
Yeah, oh, he's doing the full job, he should get the full pay of what we're in a magistrate for.
Yeah, I got no, I got no question.
Cause he's about one year in.
Yeah. Consensus?
Yes.
He took over for Mr. Maxi? Lynn? Number twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, other non-union salary officials. Be a four percent increase.
This was, um. All unions have been already done, this is a yearly thing that we have to go with. We don't have to go with this, but this is recommended.
Yeah.
Out of the committee.
I'm good with that.
Intentions?
Go against it?
Intentions. Twenty-six, cost saving ideas, revenue sources. Talking over there, what do you got? I think we should start doing.
We just keep saving money, we don't even know it, because we keep moving. Doing all the things.
Has one of these ideas or savings, so maybe we should maybe start thinking about a five percent. If you come up with the save.
Got some new cost savings and some revenue, and we'll give you a bonus.
Well, it might get people there, start thinking about, how can we save money instead of how we spend it?
Right.
Cause if we save a thousand dollars and they're making a hundred of it, so we still save nine hundred.
Yeah.
And they're making a hundred bucks. That's, they might think of that.
Right, oh no.
And on that unfinished business, do we have any? Joel, do we have any unfinished business? Financial matters appropriations, um, pathways, committee mental health appropriations. For October first, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, eight thousand dollars. Questions? Consensus?
Yep.
Yeah.
Court bills, do we have any?
They were all approved.
Consensus on the war bills? Uh, who, financial reports for all funds? Consensus? Do we have any resolutions?
There's uh, three resolutions, and we had, then we had a resolution to committee meeting.
Their discourse.
And I was going to, I like to go over them. And I was, I was gonna, I was, when I got them, it was, you have to have eight, eight, eighteen hours. If you have a resolutions meeting, you have to. So I got it, uh. Late, late Friday, so it wouldn't be, but I'd like to have one, it's me and Mike.
You want us to wait for the November fourth meeting, or do you wanna do it fast before?
I'd like, there, there's some things I'd like to do with it, and uh. Uh, I'd like to do before that, we could.
Yeah, get it ready and, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, once it's ready, I can. I can make fifteen, twenty minutes worth. Come go over them, yeah, that's fine with me, whatever we need to do.
And so, actually, there is no presence at this point, so we'll do that simple. You made your reports, Lightning, you released?
No, nothing new though.
Nikki, no, I don't think I've been, we had a health department.
Yeah, we did. There was no action items on that.
Still haven't figured out if you're open on Fridays?
No, we're not open on Fridays, but we have people there, so we got, we got.
You're not sticking to your guns.
I am, we're trying. I'm trying avenues. Um, you have any committee members?
Well, our first, that's actually, yes, um, our first meeting will be the thirtieth. Um, Wednesday, over thirtieth, we'll have our first. Full meeting where everybody will talk about our next meeting, probably. Yeah, so, a lot to happen there, um, what happened? I'm gonna say the only other meeting I had was Cam, but I'm on there and not as the board, so. I'm on the executive committee for. No, they got canceled, but then we had to have an executive, because there were things that needed to be done in August. I know, I'm the executive, but I'm not as a board member, so do I? Do I? Or not, I don't know. That one's confusing.
Correspondents? Have any correspondents?
I'm gonna state, approved or received or opt out for designated successor, and says they'll be in touch. They won't be doing anything at this time. So the Livingston County Resolution to monitor and document contact between illegal immigrants and the Livingston County Sheriff's Department. There's a Washtenaw County Resolution to, how do you say it?
They're not immigrants.
Oppose, the Livingston County Resolution to monitor and document. Illegal immigrants, contact, uh, and then there is, uh, Wexford County. Declaring Wexford County is not a sanctuary county for illegal immigrants. Hot topic. Apparently, see what else coming in.
That's what we're having.
You paid those people in, um. Ohio, that, that, all of forty thousand, the government sent in twenty thousand from Haiti. And they, and their whole, they haven't sent any money in with them, and their, everything in their, in their county. Has been, they have no money left. They have no money to give into the children and things like that, and that's one of the things I wanted to discuss, like about. Cause we got this, they could drop that off here, and what do we do?
The good news is, there's nowhere for them to go.
No, they didn't have anything there either. Motels and film.
Yeah. Yeah.
They have done that in different cities.
They could do it for.
We have a lot of hotels.
That would really curse because.
I would like to see that addressed.
Yeah.
Got the intro correspondence? More comments?
Okay.
Now you can say.
And November eleventh is Veterans Day, and we have a board meeting at five, and the veterans dinner is at six.
So, where's the veterans dinner at?
Legion. I just don't know if like, we, I don't know if we're gonna have a big agenda that we have to deal with, did we put it off to Tuesday?
It all depends on how many, how long people thirst.
Maybe the whole meeting?
We can't, yeah, we can't move it, it's gotta be there, it's just, lots of people's queues, and I bet you I can be out of here in five minutes.
Okay.
But we're pretty much.
No, it don't work for me.
He's got, he's gonna be there, be there, he's gotta be at the door and checking people in, like, six o'clock is the, like, the grab your beer and sit down, but.
Your food, doors open at five, have your food and sit down.
No.
No.
No, let's grab your beer and sit down first. Or whatever.
We can't change it though.
We can.
We have, we have to set them. At the beginning of the year, if there's anything against us actually moving.
Earlier?
I think we have time, so if you're.
We're only on our first. Yeah, November eleventh is.
We can adjust.
David's after? Or you wanna do it earlier?
Can we consider that a holiday?
We can. Columbus Day, veterans, presidents, and.
Okay, are no longer on me.
But we can do it the following day or earlier, what works best for you?
It don't matter to me.
Want to go to, do it at four o'clock, guys won't be at the dinner too, so.
Yeah, see, there's, I'm like, there has to, there's like three of us, I think you could go to it, so I'm like.
Well, maybe Rick do.
And I think Rick, so, you know, the whole board.
You'll have all these?
You're allowing all these?
Becky grabbed me last week, said, hey, I don't see him on the list yet.
Well, I know that we have. A land bank meeting we've set up for three o'clock that day. So I'm already going to be here, so if we just moved it to four, I think that would.
Would that be okay?
Oh, yeah.
Earlier.
As long as you spin her on, it all depends on how much you wanna talk and ask questions.
I know.
No, I, I think that's, I mean.
I was just trying to like, between crunching my kids at three o'clock, getting out of school, getting them to the center, getting to the dinner, doing all the things, I was like, I have two meetings I gotta do.
Whatever's okay with you guys, four o'clock works for me.
Yeah, ours is just gonna go.
Then he can just look at it and see.
Okay. Uh, make a motion that we move the November fourth board meeting to four P M to accommodate the Veterans Dinner on Veterans Day.
November eleventh.
Yeah. Eleven, eleven, eleven.
I support.
I was gonna give it to her because she answered it.
Roll call.
She looking at me.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Commissioner Otto?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes. And thank you for remembering that.
Yeah, I only saw it on Saturday, how come I? You voted to have it on that day, that's the Tom Labor or Veterans Day.
Yeah.
It just happens, yeah, eleven just happens to be that day right?
Okay, staff comments, Joel?
Public accuracy test. Alright, I guess, took longer than I expected.
Take all day, it's all.
Oh, man, it took forever, um, and then early going straight to twenty-six. Otherwise, working on budgets and. Gonna start figuring out insurance here, pull it into the. So we're curious about when you were taking off, so.
It's set a budget, maybe we'll go and get back, we'll be ready.
Wait, take it back?
I wanna leave. I don't know, it depends what snows up there, I, my plan is the first week of November. You got like seven days for the week of November.
Yeah, so.
Well, then you'll probably be going to some Veterans Day anyway.
No, no.
First week of November, first through the seventh, I don't go by week days, they're all four days, so.
We'll be into the second week of November by Veterans Day.
Yeah, then we can begin first.
My wife's twisting my arm to get to Florida about that time. The, uh, screen over the pool is, that's it.
Alright.
Pam, you got anything?
No, nothing.
Any more public comment?
Only, please look at the.
Yeah.
Information and put something on the agenda someday.
I, I think that, that there would be better, you're talking to community. We'd be better off with a township, wouldn't you?
Townships.
Especially in this area, we're scattered so far apart.
I don't, and I'm gonna wait until, because. Using township, they're, they just put a set in on top of the fire hall. Oh, yeah, they ended up putting on the side, they were.
Easier access.
Yeah. Save the road. And make easier access for maintenance, because they figure it might be a maintenance monitor. But I'd like to see how that is going and see where their savings is.
Yeah. It might be locked.
But this is, this is gonna be a good test for other townships.
My kids tell her on all of it.